Hollywood Brad.
Oh yeah.
Director and producer. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the July 24th meeting of the Planning Board of the West Hampton Beach. Stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I guess we can breeze by the fill applications.
Sorry.
Nope, don't apologize. Totally understand. Okay, I guess we're gonna start with the Gables.
Good. I'm not sure if this is afternoon or evening, but hello. So we, on July 15th, I think we submitted another proposed plan. And as we talked about, you know, we're trying to, there's a balance, I guess, we're trying to achieve here. One is to shield this project from the public at large, but do it in a way that the public at large doesn't have a terrible thing to look at, as far as landscaping goes. So they're almost conflicting goals. And obviously, we have a third goal, which is to have a beautiful interior for the people who will ultimately be living here. We've kind of hooked everything back to the original plan, the original landscape plan here. I don't recall if we spent a lot of time on that plan when it was first approved.
You did. You have a very competent arborist here.
True.
Phenomenal explanation.
The original, original plan I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's the earlier one.
Yeah, but I don't, you know, in terms of the goals that seem to be set here, I don't think that plan accomplished either of them very well.
But we did approve it.
You did approve it? Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, you know, this is, this is our attempt to, to try to meet both of those goals by providing some interest. We couldn't actually get some, it was too, too quick to get actual proposed renderings. So what we did was, my client did plant in, fully plant in some of the areas, and those are what the photographs are. Now, you have to keep in mind, as we should have kept in mind with the patio gardens and with the Riverhead Road project, we, it's kind of a false comparison to compare our initial plantings to what those other plantings look like now. Because we're still a construction site. They're fully developed and fully, fully matured plants. And the hope and the expectation is that, given the same amount of time, our landscaping will, will fill in and serve the purposes that the board is attempting to, you know, the board is looking for out of this, out of this project. There are more indifferent types of plants now than there has been in any plan prior to this. Some of the counts have went down, but now they've gone up a little bit more. I think there's been some discussion about canopy plants, and from the last plan to this plan, we have increased that. We've also tried to attempt to make the plan more understandable by dividing it in half and providing some breakout details as well. And so, you know, I think we have attempted to give our best effort at meeting the competing goals that have been set for us with, with this plan. And I received, we received and reviewed the memo from the planner, and it wasn't terrible from, from our perspective. Really, very few, very few specific comments, as I recall. I'm trying to interpret that to mean that we're at least almost there, if not there.
Starting to see a little color here.
Pardon me?
Starting to see a little color here that we didn't see before.
Yep, that's definitely, definitely in the, in the plan. And again, these are not their final mature size, but they will grow along with everything else. I think that the corner is a particularly nice example. The, I think that the pergolas at the end of the sidewalks, which will not line up with the buildings, but will line up with the parking areas, I think, now, make more sense as well. And that certainly breaks up, as people are driving by at, well, I guess in the busy time, driving by at 20 miles an hour, but driving by at 50 miles an hour, it should be a different, a different scene.
I just thought that maybe you could put more, these don't seem to be too mature on Depot Road, Montauk Highway.
I'm sorry?
These don't seem to be overly mature.
No.
Plantings.
No.
They're gonna take a while.
They're gonna take, they're, you know, the goal was here resistance. And so that, you know, obviously limits some of the choices we have. But these, these views and these vistas are shared by our customers as well as by the public at large. So it's certainly in our best interest to, to create circumstances that will be appealing as time goes on. But again, it's, it's, it's a difficult comparison to, you know, we would have to think back to what Patio Villas looked like when it was first planted, what the place on Riverhead Road looked like when it was first planted. And they've, I would grant that they both matured into something very nice. And it's our expectation that the plan that we've presented to you will do the same thing.
I don't think it looks bad. The way it's broken up now, it's not like a big, long, green edge from one end of the property to the other.
Right.
You can see in, and I think all this stuff's gonna grow just fine. Even out the airport, the turn-in to the airport, all that stuff is a berm, but all those plants, when they were planted, looked about the same as these. And they stood the test of time so far.
I think the stagger that you provided, and I'll refer to this, this photo. This photo in, this, I drove by and I took a look, and even though, you know, you've got the fabric up, you can see that there's depth. And I, I think that it solves the issue of the green wall, and I think it gives good, good depth of section at the same time, which we were trying to find some kind of, like, medium pathway through so that we could move ahead with this.
Right.
But I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that this looks decent.
Yeah.
How about that? Yeah, that, if we say, hey, listen, do we, do we like this? All right, and just say, okay, that's what we're gonna do.
Well, I was hoping for a little more articulation. You know, I think having these wooden structures right up against the sidewalk isn't the way we'd initially gone through this on the original plan. These were actually set back significantly. So I was actually hoping for a little more articulation, but I'll certainly defer to the board members. And Brad, do you have anything to add? Do we have any comments on this? I mean, is this a happy medium between the original approved plan and the articulation we were looking for, and the plant count we were looking for, and the plant variety we were looking for?
Yeah, I think this is more in line with, obviously, there is much more evergreen along the perimeter than was originally approved. But the plant counts on this one and the variety, you need this substantial, right, plant count.
Did you have a feeling for Britton's opinion?
Yeah, I think they, they took the comments that we engaged.
So we're not gonna get in trouble with her when she comes back next week?
Bush lady.
We got a problem with her, we're gonna tell Jim May to stop it.
Plants are really not, I think, the aesthetics is kind of more, whatever the board thinks of this.
I think my question is, when, when do you think we'll be able to get started on Old Riverhead Road and Montauk Highway there, behind the gas station and, and north of there?
Yeah, so we'll be able to get the Montauk Highway side done relatively quickly. We're moving irrigation down that way, so that should be, you know, within a couple weeks. We're, we really can't plant too close to the sanitary plant until that's fully done. We're making progress there. That's probably a month away, and then we can start irrigating and putting the trees in.
You still have your equipment there.
It's all in. It's just plumbing and sign-offs and backfilling and things like that. But I think that could be the challenge on the Riverhead roadside. But our, our goal, I think it's mutual in the sense that we want to get a landscape as quickly as possible because it does soften the aesthetic and dismiss some of the concerns that people have. So we want to get it done as soon as possible.
But our visitors to the village this summer won't see it.
I'm, I'm probably not on the Riverhead roadside. I think we'll get down and run on the Montauk Highway side, certainly before maybe that.
Still working on power.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
From west to east.
It's under construction.
Yeah, to get to the east side, it's kind of, they'll get there as soon as possible, but it's still a little ways out.
I have a question. I guess that some of the, well, some of the blue spruce and some of the others say by units 204 or 304, it happens frequently. When the, when the trees are planted in, they're, they're pretty close to the sidewalk, at least in the symbol to choose. They're over the sidewalk. Now, spruce over the sidewalk is gonna obstruct that sidewalk.
Right, well, I think a number of the-
The new plants going in, that may not be a factor now, but as they grow, I want to make sure that sidewalk is clear, both internally and external. More, more internally, where you're going in, the plantings are showing they're extending over the sidewalk.
Yeah, that, I mean, obviously, that's, that's not our intent, is to have it encroach on the walkways. And at, right now, when you go to the site, there is two and a half, three feet from the outside edge of the trees to the sidewalk, and we understand that they can't close off to the sidewalk.
Can you get some information from your arborist that just sent us an email or something, for what the, what diameter of these things will be five, 10 years from now?
Sure.
You know, that's just, as you plan, that's the one thing I do have some concern for. We'll eventually draw out a sidewalk, or you'll have a bit of cutting off the side, believe the sidewalk.
I'm not the landscape professional, but I know in dealing with Chris, he was pretty cognizant of not overplanting and it kind of eating itself alive, but I'll give you that information.
Some drawings are, yeah.
Yeah, we can provide that.
It's a symbol, and symbol may be, when they're going in, they may be smaller, and they may not get as big. Because engineers usually, or architects usually try and show a bigger symbol because it looks like it's more.
Well, you know, we have a similar condition on Main Street with all the trees are planted there, particularly the Sycamores or whatever, London Plain. And one way or another, they have to be maintained yearly to be able to walk under them.
Yeah, they really shouldn't cut that, that major 15.
I can, I can imagine that that could be, you know, a condition of the approval, that we maintain that condition if it exists. I mean, that just sounds like ongoing maintenance.
You know, probably have it on the bond then, but we'll make it.
The bond is on, typically, we cut the bond down when we're done with construction. We'll keep the land, unfortunately, for the landscape in place for, until we know everything's surviving, usually a year or two. But that's when the bond ends. But you could put it in covenants that the sidewalk has to get cleared. In some cases, if you haven't built the sidewalk, it may be easy to push the sidewalk back away from the plant, which is okay too.
I'm sorry, you told me the public sidewalk or the?
Internal.
Internal. Okay.
It's more, it's shown more as infringing on the internal or the external.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we could add that. Easy to put a condition on.
Yeah. We should do it for the extra, you know, for the extra growing beyond, probably infringing on the sidewalk along Montauk and P. B.
Either.
Yeah.
Either.
That's part of the landscape.
Internal walk was part of your, part of the reductions, so something-
Exactly, right. You can't, if you then covered it up in trees, it would really be a false.
It's a year, two years. It's not gonna be five years from now. So if you get some from the arborist saying five years from now, we're not, these sidewalks will not be needed. That would help now, and we'd also make the condition that.
Can we do that, Anthony?
Yeah, I mean, that could be incorporated into the modification resolution.
Okay.
You want to get an answer from the arborist just to know, like, what's the maximum?
Yeah, just a little, yeah.
I guess another question to ask him is if it, there are some trees that if you start cutting them back at the base, because they get so big, it's just gonna be woody, non-evergreen, gross. So you might want to just double check that if wherever they're being placed, if you do end up having to cut them back to the sidewalk or pathway, it's not gonna turn it into just a brown mess. Yeah, without the underbrush, that-
Which is really what we want.
Yeah, exactly. Like, that doesn't serve anybody's purpose to have just woody underbrush for the first 10 feet.
Rare West Hampton variety of arborite. And would you like to make a, would you please stand and come up? Well, I'm gonna ask one that you're gonna ask first. Did we address that north borderline to the satisfaction of everybody?
Well, I don't know if it's to the satisfaction of everybody. I will say the original plan did not have much along the Arbor Card.
Right, but the new one does.
The new one definitely, because the older one did more rely on the, there existing fence to the north, there existing tree. It was more ornamental and for the tenants on the original plan. This plan definitely adds a lot more evergreens along the northern boundary, unlike the original. I don't want to speak for a neighbor, but in, in my mind, this does more, this newer version does more in screening than the previous.
Than the approved version.
They're planting, you know, more evergreens, spreads it, but you're also, according to the landscape plan, there's an existing row of 15, 20-foot cedar pine, you have property already.
Yes, on the northerly property.
Yeah.
Well, this, this shows an, in fact, Gables property.
Yeah, on the northerly side of our, of our property.
But here, there's some Gables.
I'm not sure where the fence is at.
Right, I think it's where the copper line approximately is, but there's mature, existing trees there, and evergreens and strategically located ornamental or canopy trees within that as well.
Would you like to come to the podium, ma'am? Thank you. What do you think, and does this?
Looks good.
I just have two questions first. Will there be any planting along our stockade fence done by the Gables to kind of mask the view of the buildings there?
I think we were just talking about that specifically.
If everyone in here isn't mic'd, I can't hear what some people are saying. I guess I'm getting old, but my ears are working.
The modification proposal significantly addresses that issue. It was something we were very cognizant of during our conversations.
And second, will they have any kind of fence, or are they just counting on our stockade fence to be their fencing also?
I think the existing fence is what we're dealing with right now. There won't be a second fence, if that's what you're asking.
Our fence, so if we do anything to our fence, then, you know, if our fence comes down or anything, it will be Patio Villa's responsibility to plant a fence back up.
So you are a site plan from the early 80s, mid-80s. That fence is on that site plan. I know the fence was changed at some point, but-
Right, about six years ago.
We would maintain that fence. It doesn't, my estimation, it's never a good idea to have fences back up to each other because it's debris, it's weeds, it's roses, it's-
Dead animals and all that.
It's always better to have nice neighbors who share a fence because it's one thing to me.
Okay, so, but they will have some sort of planting there, and where can I see this? You know, what you've all been looking at.
In my office, and I will show you the latest plan. I can show you the previously approved plans we did.
And the photos and everything?
Yeah, the photos, if you have all the stuff.
Okay, I back up to the berm, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of looking out at a hill and-
On your specific, to the east end, it's more of the screening vegetation around the sanitary system, which as we discussed earlier, that hasn't been even started yet because you have to get power, you have to get irrigation. The sanitary has to be totally proved, what they can backfill, bring up soil and stuff. That's gonna be a little wide, wide with these.
And they can't do any more trimming to those boundary trees that Southampton has protected?
Yeah, there should have been.
Because they're, they have been lopping off parts of that, but no more?
There are some trees that will be added on that side, but any of the trees that are there are not-
It's the outside of their property, but those have been whittled down a little bit.
They own part of that property along over there. There's more trees to go in, but again, we have not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna need a motion to accept modification as illustrated by the-
I think we have to wait. We, we need a written decision on this.
Okay.
Too much of a modification to-
Okay.
Because we're gonna put some conditions in, Ralph, so
Okay.
I certainly wouldn't mind a, a straw vote so that you can indicate that you're ready to proceed with the decision, but I would like to do this by written decision.
So I guess we do have a consensus then, gentlemen, is that correct?
Yes.
I just want to, just so we don't come back here again and we can talk about it another time. There's two photographs in the, that were provided, and they show the stagger. This plan.
Yes, right.
Okay. Is it in everybody's, is everybody's opinion that we're gonna follow this through on the entire front?
That would be my impression on the whole thing for so many feet.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that.
So many feet, you would have something that's different.
Well, that's not, I don't think that's what's in the existing plan. No, but I'm just putting it to the table because I think they, am I correct that you modified this for presentation that it's, this is what you're gonna do across the entire front?
You've got to look at the landscape plan, not the representation.
You know, we have a oak deciduous tree, we have an oak deciduous tree, and they're all staggered and buried along Montauk Highway, and it is-
Right, but it's, but it, but it basically deals with the green wall. The green wall goes away. When I say goes away, we break it up, and there's depth of section and variety.
Well, but, but wait, I don't want you being, the plan that's in front of us, I think, still has some fairly lengthy sections of green giants.
Okay.
Like, it's not like that what you're looking at
All the way.
is gonna be every 30 feet or every, whatever. The, the corner sections along Montauk and Depot
Hey Brad, would you bring that up here and let everybody take a peek at it?
You know, quite a few green giants still in a row.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all on the-
You're not okay with that? You need to, you need to have that discussion now.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted, you know, let's-
Let's wrap this up now.
For the record, this is the submission from, what's the page?
See how we have these sections? You've got a longer section here, you've got this big section to the corner.
But I think, but I think this, this photograph happens somewhere in here.
Well, I would say right about here.
Well, that's the trellis, isn't it?
Okay, yeah.
You know, maybe we need some- Right, but it's, it's there right now. But what I see here on the photograph is not represented on the plan.
I think it is, I think it's just a detail.
Well, I'm just, I, I went there, I was there last weekend, I was there today. So I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at that.
I don't know which one that is specifically, but I, this plan here is one of these plans here, which is certainly, you know, we're drilling down.
The reason I'm beating this to death is that we need to, this needs to go away.
It wants to go in.
We need, it needs, it needs to go away. So, but I'm looking at this, and I don't see this on paper.
Well, I don't, it's really hard to illustrate that on this.
What I, what I mean is, we're gonna come back here and I say, hey, well, this is the plan. This looks nice.
Right.
All right, that, that's my whole point.
This was planted in the context of that plan.
Right, but I don't see this represented here. This, this looks good, and everybody agrees with it.
Where is this?
This is an oak, so we have to go to the key, right? So you have to go to the bed details. Right, so A, B, and C.
Okay, so what's on, what's on that front page is not represented?
It is, but it's in a further zoomed-out version, so these details are each individual.
Okay. If you look on the main plan, it says C, insert X, and then you have to go to the back, back page to exonerate the details.
But you still have to understand, there, the two sections-
You have a big wall here, you have a big wall here.
So if you're expecting to see that along- Well, this is already in place.
Some variation we're looking at.
Yes.
This is here already. But that's not what's depicted.
I think we're right about it.
Right, that's not depicted here.
No, it's not everywhere. That's there.
Correct.
And then somewhere else, there's, yeah, I think there's nine details along Montauk Highway, and they've changed the corner of Montauk Highway and Depot.
But there are areas-
Except that the, the two big stretches along the corner-
From building one to the clubhouse. That's right.
Well, that's it. There's a stretch of green giants. I didn't get a chance to see this in, in person because I just got back from a project, waited for a week.
This is why I said we were looking for more articulation.
On vacation, on a project, so. No, I just wanted, I just wanted to get clarification on this.
We understand, we understand.
Okay. Yeah, but the question- I'm good. The question is, are you good with that?
Well, my opinion was that this is still too big. I mean, that was my opinion, okay? I wanted to see this kind of articulation, the entire length of it. Well, not here, okay? What you do on Depot Road, I don't really, you know, that's not what people are gonna be seeing. But this particular one, I thought you could have, you know, possibly brought this in like the original plan. On the original plan, it articulated to the parking lot. All of them did.
The original, original plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have that one here.
Yeah.
You have that one. Open that up.
If it's repetitive, then is that better or worse?
Well, not having the wall was the mission.
There's some green here, and then there's some articulation here, and then there's some-
And then there's no articulation here.
That true.
I, I, I think in, I mean, live, it doesn't look like this massive wall. It's from building one to the clubhouse, and the corner of the clubhouse has been completely removed, and it's all plantings back to that Copper Beach. So, you know, I understand what it looks like on a piece of paper. I don't personally feel like it is, you know, this vast wall when you look at it live.
I think it softened up a little where this bevel is here.
We took seven of the, the trees out of that corner.
Okay.
Well, I'm not gonna continue to flog this horse.
Yeah, that's why I'm just hoping that we just not come back here again.
That's why I said the articulation is important. And I don't know that we accomplished it, okay? That's why I said-
Okay.
But-
I got it.
That was in the record, and that's what I said. And we're all in agreement that this plan surprises. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have consensus?
I'm good. Do a scroll poll, please, like. Go on the record, please, and just say it. Hey, I'm on the record, I'm good with the plan.
I think for my, for myself, Chairman, I think I'd like to see the variation right from Depot Road all the way to Old Riverhead Road.
So then you're not happy with this?
I, I just like to see it. I, I, I know they're going in the right direction, but I think I want to see more images, not black and white. I want to see more images along the highway there, where it's gonna look like, for variation.
I'd like to get this done, and I think it looks good like it is.
And I think they're moving in the right, right direction, that's for sure.
I'm good with the plan.
I'm good with the plan.
I'm good with the plan. Only because, only because I think they're, I think they're sincere on what they want to do, okay?
I do too.
I mean, I'd like to see more images of it, but I, I trust that you understand what we're saying to you now and, and-
See, so you're saying that you're receptive to- The plan is the plan. I mean, it's not changing. If you're gonna say it's good, they're not-
Well, it is changing. It is changing.
Well, it isn't changing. It's not changing from what you have. You're, you're saying you're good with the plan.
No, 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 it's gonna change. This is changed from last month.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Just want to make sure, you're approving the plan, you're bringing the plan.
I beg your pardon?
You have one last request, not related to the landscape. If, if it absolves everyone's concerns, we could look to pull out three or four of the evergreens or make a bump out between building one and the clubhouse and just be done.
By the parking lot then? Just pull it back.
Whatever proceeding one is, we'll do the opposite there and have a little detail.
Yeah.
That's the longest stretch.
Yeah.
This, this looks.
Cut at the wall a little bit.
Yeah, nice idea.
I, I, and I don't know if Jim's getting into this, we would like to, to get COs on some units. So I'm happy to make this change and keep everything moving. I just, we have a little bit of a timing mismatch, so if you can work with us on that, I would appreciate it.
I think what we'd like is a year from now, we can see our residents coming up to us and saying, you know, it's starting to look pretty good over.
And then we'll give you the COs.
You know what I'm saying? Instead of all the complaints and, and so forth, that they can say, hey, that's starting to look pretty good. I was really, really against this.
As salty as it is to have it come out of my mouth, I do think this looks better than what we had originally.
I, I agree, I was just saying at the council, yeah, yeah.
What if we say this, you're good with the plan, you'd like them to make that one thing, we'll work on the resolution for the next meeting. And sometime before the next meeting, get the new plan in so that it can be referenced in the resolution, okay?
And what is the date of that meeting?
July twenty, oh no, today's July twenty fourth, August?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
That's what it says.
Yeah, August fourteenth is the next meeting.
Yep.
And then the one after that is August.
So if, if we're having an agreement that we're working in good faith with each other, and we went to you with the request for a CO, would that be okay?
What do you guys think? I mean, it's done, we do it sometimes.
Brad, that's pretty.
As long as you authorize Brad to do that.
Obviously, we need all of the under conditions.
But we have bonds and thirty-some odd units outside of phase one. I, I'm not worried, they've already put in a ton of plantings. I'm not worried, but, but it wouldn't be strictly in adherence with our approval.
Right, so you'd have to take a vote today to authorize Brad to give out the COs prior to.
The completion of the.
Of the modified plan.
Okay, so I need a motion.
To delegate the.
To delegate Brad.
Authorizing.
Authorize Brad.
I, I make the motion to authorize Brad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, was that what you were gonna answer?
So, so thank you. Very good, thank you all very much.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
So just real, thank you, real quick, I owe you the detail for the updated landscape plan and then the diameter estimates for the mature, for the loose.
Just confirm it, right?
Yeah.
Confirm it.
And we'll put it in our.
How far they should be put, the center should be.
And since you're in the midst of revising again, if you've got to kick something off the sidewalks a little bit, now might be the time to do it.
We gotta go.
If you have to bump. If you find out from your arborist that it's gonna be too wide, and you want to make a slight adjustment, make a slight adjustment, that's all he's saying.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I was just wondering if Mr. Riley's vote will count?
No.
He couldn't make the meeting tonight, I'm worried.
And it normally doesn't anyway, so it's not a big deal. We try to ignore him.
If he shows up at the next meeting, was formally voted on, he'll either join with this group or he'll dissent.
We have a quorum.
This is, we have a, a majority vote authorizing this plan with the one modification that's mentioned, so. Votes always count, but it's not gonna change the majority.
Well, maybe not Dave Riley's.
Yeah, motions for adjournment?
I make motion, will you adjourn?
No, I got one oh four, Main Street.
Oh, one oh four.
Yeah, so I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant. I was retained this afternoon, and I would respectfully request that this matter be put over for two weeks.
Look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, there's comments out there, right?
Yes.
You have a lot?
No, I'm gonna come see you tomorrow.